I call in order, the Allen School Boardwork Session.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for attending February's work session. Think we may have some people here for public forum with high school baseball. Okay, does every representative would like to come forward?
Hi, I'm Jill Dempsey and this is Amy Lowry. We're representing the P S B A baseball boosters. We're here today because we want to seek permission for our brickhead experience that is March 27th through the 30th. This trip will be no cost to the district. The minimum requirement only from the district is the certification of insurance. All expenses will be covered from fundraising to the boosters. The players all know they must be to school the day before and the day after the trip. All the parents will sign release forms for their players to participate and they are aware that there's no guarantee of playing time on this trip. We're planning on having the bus be part Monday morning, Thursday, March 26th. The games will be held the middle weekend and the bus will come back on Monday morning, March 30th. Coach Popovich is going to select of the 20 players. Four coaches will be paid for by the boosters. The total cost of the bus is $5,690 plus the driver's room. The total cost of brickhead for the players and coaches is $4,851. The bus driver's room is estimated to be around $500. The boosters are also going to cover the cost of breakfast and other meals, estimated at about $1,000. The total estimated cost of the trip is $12,813.15, but not expected to exceed $13,500. We do know that we need to get chaperones to get their clearances. We also want them to know that the baseball team out of 30 baseball players, 28 players are on the on-ball. So we don't think this will affect their school or get it. And we actually need to know as much as is possible so we can start analyzing everything with the bus and the telephones.
Very good. Any questions from the board? Good luck.
Thanks.
Could you do point any questions on your end?
No, they've been doing this for the last 10, 12 years. They've got it down pretty fast.
Would you guys like a copy of the agenda?
I would like a copy and I can make copies with the board if you want.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else here for public forum?
If there's nobody from the community, I would like to comment. We've got two, well, we have several proposed policies on the agenda and we sell them, actually discuss the proposed policies. The first one that I'm looking at is the policy manual 000 Local Board Procedures #11. It's, I'm assuming that this is directed towards me, but there is a specific addition that monitors or tries to prohibit what a board member posts on their particular individual social media sites. And while it acknowledges that you can't stop a board member from the general use of social media, that if we comment on or share non-confidential information, we have to specifically state that we're doing so in capacity as a parent guardian, family member, member of the community, and not as a board member. My first question is who drafted this? Because I don't believe this is a proposed P S B A policy. Perhaps H is, but I doubt that he is.
You're referring to a local board procedures?
Yeah. And although I got online today to see what the current was on our website, it's not there. But thank goodness when I was elected, I printed out the entire policy manual, so I was able to pull out our current policy. And G and H is definitely an addition to that. And so who authored J?
G and H. There were other districts in the Commonwealth that have policies that they put in place. I know I spoke of other superintendents from the IU that have started to implement similar policies for board governance and district policy for social media.
So who, where did this one come from? Would you agree with me that this is not a P S B A proposed policy?
Well, I requested that we put a social media policy in.
So my comment, so who drafted it? Did I suppose you heard this?
I did send things to the solicitor for review. This is wording that came from other districts that are utilizing these policies. I want to say one of the districts that I reviewed was Washington School District. And they implemented a policy like this, I want to say maybe in December or January.
So you reached out to them to see if we could get a sample to use here?
Yeah, it was a superintendent's meeting. There was discussion about that.
You cannot limit what a board member posts as a board member. If you do that, whether it's anybody on our current board, anybody new to the board, you are opening the district up to a First Amendment violation. We are, even though we're not speaking to the board or that particular board member, obviously they're speaking not for the board, for themselves. You can't make them post as a parent guardian, a member of the community as an elected official. You have an absolute free speech right to share with your constituents important matters that are non-confidential type. For that reason, it should not be voted, it should not be approved.
I will disagree with you to an extent. I feel that a lot of the calls that I've received from, in regards to social media posts that might be third-party social media, like a concerned parents page, or something that was posted by a board member, that it's being misconstrued that that's the opinion of the entire board or the district. The only thing that I'm asking is to consider that if a board member makes a post on a private or a personal page, that there's a disclaimer that states this, these are the thoughts, opinion of me as the board member, not specifically the board as a whole.
That's not how the policy is written. It says that it must be specifically stated that their comments are made in capacity of a parent guardian, other family member, et cetera, not as a board member. That you're opening the entire district up to a federal surprise lawsuit because of that, if that's enforced.
Well, we can certainly review it and make changes to it however we deem necessary. You know, and that's why there's three readings, so we can make necessary changes so we're not doing something that is incorrect.
Mr. Baker, could you just recommend one perhaps, or one edit that you could perhaps consider with me to say for that last sentence, the board member should specifically state that his or her comments are being made solely in his or her capacity as a parent, et cetera, and not made on behalf of the board or school directors. And again, just to simply express the preference is to make sure that people are taking a personal responsibility in their non-board goals for their statements being made and that they are not speaking on behalf of the board. It's one suggested edit that we could consider, but I think would make it clear that what you're trying to do is set an expectation for what your board is hoping people will do as they express their opinions on social media, just to make it clear that they're not speaking on behalf of the community.
Did Mr. Price look at this and approve it as it is written?
So it was sent to us middle of last week. Mr. Price has been out, maybe in one or night, but I don't know.
Did you?
I did look at it, yes. So, I mean, I think that in general, there's two tensions here. One tension is, of course, that statements that are made on social media by public officials, there is a concern that those statements are read sometimes as representative of the agency as the board. So, in essence, what we're trying to do, there's a tension here between, obviously, any member of the public who is elected to the board has the absolute right to express opinions, the statements of the members of the public. But at the same time, we run the risk of those statements or postings, you know, one risk, of course, is to the extent that there are confidential matters that are expressed, we want to make sure that the case, make it clear that the board doesn't approve that or that the board believes on a policy basis that that's not an acceptable mode of discourse. But then secondly, that individuals who are posting on their own, we don't want there to be any misunderstanding by members of the public that they are speaking for the board instead of speaking for themselves.
You know what, I understand the board's attempt, if you want to try to say that it should be this, it should be that, but to say that a board member shall do something is nothing short of an attempt to censor free speech. And I could want and not going to put on every comment about a scribbled thing that this is my opinion, not the opinion of the board. I speak for myself, I don't speak for the board. Whoever doesn't get that doesn't get that. But I'm just telling you, if you attempt to enforce this, you can bring it up in federal court and the whole district is going to be admitted because of the representation of this board.
We'll take our change.
Could we take all?
Well, I'll start it from somebody that has been elected to the board.
But listen, this social media policy has gone into effect because of the vashing that you do personally to family members, my family.
Exactly. This is an attempt to censor my free speech. You just said one. Thank you. Thank you. I'm glad that that's on tape. This is specifically an attempt to censor my free speech.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Go ahead, let me see how I can vote on that.
Time out. You're the one that put all this stuff on social media about me and my family and other school board members. You're the one that's doing this. You're the one that's creating this policy.
I can only speak on my behalf. My behalf isn't to censor or take away anybody on this board's freedom of speech. It's simply that if comments are made that I think that it would be appropriate, that it is not the opinion of the school district or the school board. Like I said, and I'm open to suggestions to clean this up on how it should read, just so there's not confusion from the public, that the opinion on a third-party social media site is the opinion of the board or the district, or the post on a private is not the opinion of the entire board or the district. It's not to take away anybody's right. I'm speaking for myself as the superintendent on addressing social media concerns. And then H, that is something we discuss all the time. As it wasn't in the policy as it read prior, that board members are strictly prohibited from discussing non-public confidential and privileged matters, including but not limited to matters discussed in executive session with any third party or from posting on any non-public confidential or privileged documents on social media sites. We haven't had that issue on social media, but it is a concern that things in executive session are discussed or stay there with the people that are part of the executive session.
And that, frankly, I have no issue with that. That's right. It's a law, in my opinion, that we need to reduce to policy. I would like to point out, though, that one of the other policies, is a similar policy. It's 800 Operations 815.5 is geared to other personnel employees in the district. And there's similar restrictions on what they can do on their social media accounts. And I'd encourage everybody who's a employee of the district to take a look at this policy.
Ms. Prue, is it the, the social media policy, 800 Operations 815.5?
Yes.
Yeah, we currently do not have a social media policy in the district. And I reviewed numerous social media policies from other districts in the Commonwealth and spoke to P S B A, and it is like a hot topic in districts in regards to social media and employees. This kind of coincides with our appropriate use policy we have. The appropriate use policy doesn't mention specifically social media. So that's, you all have copied your package. That's open for discussion in regards to the social media policy. This isn't something that's in effect. It's a working document that we would have three readings to make revisions and corrections and changes. And if the board's not interested in adopting this social media policy, then yeah, that's the board's problem. But I did want to bring before the board, because there are issues with social media and third-party social media accounts and employees posting certain things on social media that put themselves in the district in a non-sobered part of the life.
Clarification, Mr. Baker. So 815.5 is a P S B A policy. Is that correct?
P S B A, there's one that's similar. Like I said, I've reviewed numerous social media policies from multiple districts throughout the Commonwealth.
But you're similar to P S B A?
Yes.
And can you, I don't expect you to have it now, but if you were to coordinate the C-11 proposed policy, are we at board districts, and do you have that policy? Or if the P S B A has a similar policy?
I can also tell you that the, on C, regarding 223 suspension expulsion, that number should actually be 233. I believe 223 something to do with transportation.
Which?
On 7th grid element instruction, on subsection C, Prue versus Reed revised policy 223, I believe that should be 233.
Yeah, the policy here is 233. On the agenda, it says 223?
It does.
Okay, I'll make sure that that's noted and corrected on the agenda for more ahead. The other policies that are for review deal with the compulsory school age changing, so we had to update these policies. Compulsory school age is no longer starting with the 2021 school year, but it'll be from 8 to 17. It'll be from 6 to 18. So the policy is effective. Obviously, there'll be additions to students. We wanted to give a first reading to his policy because it's going to be during registration coming up later on this spring. Publes under suspensions and expulsions, that information regarding compulsory school age needed updated as well. So those are the reasons for the changes in those particular policies. What item was that on the agenda? C. And so it should read 233. Thank you. Any other questions on the policies that you have in your package in regards to what we need to review?
I have a social media page and I have no problem putting a disclaimer on there because I hate for it to be confusion, is what I have to say in the thoughts of the district.
The way that the current proposal is, everything that you would comment that would have anything to do with the school, you would have to put a disclaimer that you were posting it yourself and it's not a representation of what the district are saying. And as I said, it's no brand. It is.
All right. Russ, Mr. Lucas, you've said a change could be made to that particular item. Would be instead of shall or must, it should be should. That way you're not being directed that you have to, but it's the district's asking you to.
It's a statement of the district's policy or their preference or their expectation. And then again, at the end of that, in the same sentence, to state it's being made solely in his or her capacity as a parent, et cetera, and not on behalf of the board or school directors.
So are we going to have a similar requirement for every teacher that posts a comment on a snow day or on what a long year it's been, or if the kids are traveling through the PSSAs, or what a good job they did on the PSSAs? Every teacher needs to put that disclaimer out there? Hey, I'm putting this out online, we have, we have the school district. That's the parallel.
I've worked outside the school district. We've always had social media policies. And I can't even, I'm not even on Facebook anymore because I can't be Facebook friends with people that I've ever treated. And I've treated a lot of my friends. So I'm just used to it and found that I got along very well without it. That's me.
Any other comments or questions, suggestions? Yeah, I'm going to, I have Mr. Candy Otto here from Carlisle. We, I'm going to jump into maintenance real quick. I asked Mr. Candy Otto, I believe all of you have received the original quote from Triangle Roofing before, where we had discussed it at the last meeting for the work that would be done with the roof over. And I met with Mr. Candy Otto, our maintenance guys, and other contractors. So he did solicit other quotes from contractors that are certified to perform your work, correct?
Correct.
So I have those other quotes here that I will share with board in regards to, and Russ, am I allowed to talk about pricing publicly or is that?
Yeah, I haven't seen those. I just said that, said they're directly viewed to make the, whatever these stuff now is, is what we do.
Now, the process here is-
When do you see this, Chris? So you're permitted to? I mean, there's no violation of contract? Or just if there's some, to some degree, if there's some advantage or leverage that you'd rather keep than appreciate, that we, if you want to talk about that in public?
Yeah, I think this too, with being this is a co-star procurement project, I don't think, not in my eyes, that there would be anything, because it's not a closed bid, per se, where you're going to open up things. This is something that would be looked at, I mean, just like this.
Yeah, I agree. I'm just saying, like, certainly with this, you could do with co-stars type pricing is, you can negotiate after the fact with the vendors and you just, I don't necessarily have that conversation with public that gives up any of our strategy or any leverage or anything like that. That's all.
Well, now with this process, the way I'm understanding this works, being with his co-stars, I did have him get us two other quotes from approved contractors for their materials and their product. So we do have three different estimates. And I believe how this works is we can use these quotes to bargain. We're not tied into taking the lowest quote. We can, if we wanted to use one contractor that we're familiar with over the others, if they weren't the lowest, we can kind of negotiate with them to see if they can come in lower to match a price from another approved contractor. So those are the things that, you know, the process that I will partake in with Mr. Candy Otto and Vince to see, you know, that we get the best possible price and the contractor that we would be most comfortable with. And I did talk to Mr. Todak and Mr. Chapley, who are familiar with our roofs. And, you know, so we'll have those conversations as well. Basically, the, what I will, I'll get my calculator here. The difference in price from the highest quote, out of the three, the highest quote without making the cut was $360,000. If this was all with the same scope of work, okay? So I know all of it, the scope of work was reviewed with all contractors and they knew exactly what they were going to put together their price on. The lowest quote of the three was 200, was 285,000, which gives you a difference of about 75,000. Now, that also could change depending on the scan that tells us how much, tells the contractor how much wet insulation is there and what needs replaced. And they each had put in their quote that replacement, you can add or deduct the replacement of wet roof insulation, $5 a square foot. So if there's less than they are estimating, it's wet that needs replaced, the prices could come in lower than what they had given us in their quote. If it's more than that, then you can add the $5 a square, depending on how much wet insulation was there that needs removed or replaced.
Mr. Baker, is there anything built into this right now that, how much wet insulation, is there like a base price? How much they cover in the?
Well, their base price is part of their total cost for doing the project, and they've all given me-
What I'm asking is the wet insulation on top of this price, all of it, all of it.
There was 34 squares that they factored in into their base price.
That's what I-
There's 34 squares.
34 squares are already factored into this price?
So if it's less than that, they would deduct that $5, like Mr. Baker said, $5. It would be a deep debt off the base bill.
So what would be the maximum square?
This is the highest 34 squares?
Pardon me?
This is the highest 34 squares?
We just picked approximately 10% of the job. That's how we factored it in.
So there's 340 squares?
Approximately 340 squares. And until a roof scans, you know, has been done, it's hard, it's really hard to tell what is, needs to be placed and what doesn't. It could be, it could be slightly more, it could be slightly lesser, that we have to wait for the roof scan.
When will that happen?
Well, after, after, you know, we have to select a contractor out of these three that would do the work. You know, right now, we have each their individual prices. If we want to go below, we go below. We would prefer to have other companies that we're familiar with and done work, that our guys are familiar with. We can negotiate with them because they want the low price. They might come in closer to the price of the low bid, of the low quote. And we're getting to select a contractor that's part of the co-stars. That's the advantage of co-stars.
Have you worked with all three of these different?
Yes, I have.
Is there, is there one that you believe would be?
Honestly, I was a broad diner. I had a reservation. So I think all three are quality, quality contractors. And again, I haven't, I haven't seen the other two quotes, so whatever we're talking about now is, it's been me and I felt that I should not know that until I get together and have the process, but whatever. But all three are qualified, they're, their inspection ratings are at the top, they're charged, so they're all very good contractors. And yeah, whatever, you know, the board is going to make feel comfortable as we break this down.
And you, your company would be on-site daily?
Not daily. I could, you know, we could work it out to where I, you know, depending on how it starts progressing, I definitely would think, definitely in the startup, probably, you know, 25%, 50%, 75%. And then the final, there'd be a final inspection, of course, we'd make this, this frigid inspection, that we have to make sure that my, my company, Carlisle, is going to honor that, that warranty, so we're going to make sure we can do that.
So does anybody have a valid reason to go with anybody other than the most book? Does that make sense unless you're used to helping out them?
Joe, I can scan, email you a copy of the quotes that I have?
Okay.
And then you and I can discuss it. Discuss if you'd like.
Joe, I can go from there.
We can go from there. That'll be fine. Any questions from the board, from Joe or myself?
Does that include labor estimations?
Labor, everything. Revolutionary wage, whatever the prevailing wages, permits, the, I think they put the bond there too.
That was a question that I had asked Vince about, if they think this is a co-stars project or they require to do the bond bid. I'm not sure.
I believe with co-stars, when they approve them, when they put them on the approved list, that's one of the conditions, is that they really willing to go through the same process as the maintenance board.
I mean, yeah, I think, I think they put, I believe they did. I'm pretty sure they did.
Prove it subject to that.
We had, this contractor, it's been-
We had, this contractor had bid $300,000. He has a right now to sit out and match the lowest bid or come close?
That would be up to, up to you, up to the board, or whoever would want to say, if you would want to call in and negotiate and say, you know, hey, X, Y, Z, we, we like you, but, you know, can you, what can you do to reduce your price?
Can you get closer to the ballgame?
Yeah.
Ball, work on the court, right?
And I think timing of it too, I mean, you know, some, you know, I think the one contractor, he would, he was, he said to me, I think last time that we talked, that he could start actually, like, maybe after school hours, and when we get started, maybe April, May, he gets the process working. But the other two probably would start, you know, with school now.
Yeah, that, that was board board discussion last week at, at school, correct?
Correct.
There was one contractor that, that rewarded the job, would like to start.
Just because of his work, because of his workload already, and some of his work is coming in, you know, if he was, if he was successful, that's what he would like to do. And that's something that...
And I would, and I believe that discussion, it would all be second shift work, and they would come in after, for discussion.
Yeah, correct.
What are your times when you're on this project, basically?
I think, you know, it's all the weather, it depends, they, I mean, as, as you could, they said on the news this morning, we had, out of the last, out of the first 49 days of the year so far, we've had 18 days that have, that it hasn't had precipitation. So that's a big factor. The weather is definitely a factor, but I would say if, if, you know, I, I would say at least probably start to finish, everything between, you know, six weeks possibly, I think, and that's, I, I think that's probably conservative on, on the, on the, on the side of getting it done quickly. In order, I think that could be done too.
Because, I mean, it's like 70 days of school, so I mean, the process has to be started sooner, I would think.
Okay, you have questions?
So again, if you need me to be here tomorrow night, I could come out on my tour, so whatever you want me to do, if we need to go to the phone, or whatever you want to do, okay, so whatever.
Okay.
You let me know, I mean, if you need to come back tomorrow, it's certainly all.
Thank you. Now, the other items under maintenance, I wanted to discuss with you, you know, we eliminated the maintenance supervisor position, and we were piloting maintenance one and maintenance two lead positions for the first part of the year. And I, I would like to ask the board to extend that pilot through the remainder of the year before we make the decision on whether we continue that in a permanent capacity. You know, I, I think that this process has been working well, I've been in touch with...